I call the February 12th Planning Commission meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Can I have a roll call?
Chair Andrew Carr.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks. Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Matt Constantine. Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing. This includes the opportunity to address any items scheduled for a work session. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any other matter of concern, including any work session item, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card. Is there anyone who would like to testify at this time?
Thanks, Dan. Hi, my name is Ryan Shara. I'm with Schnitzer Properties. We're going to be talking, there's going to be a work session on the Basalt Creek-Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness Study. We are one of the property owners in that district. Just want to introduce ourselves, say we look forward to working with you over the next number of months on crafting that new zone out there. And yeah, we'll be in touch with staff here over the next few months. We've been in touch over the last few months, and over the next few months, we'll continue to be engaged, and you'll see more of us and looking forward to it. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you.
Chair, as we move, I don't think there's anybody on Zoom. I'm assuming for citizen, but okay. As we move to the items on the agenda, I would recommend that the Planning Commission, Planning Commission member make a motion to move the item number one to the end of, after item number five, so moving the chair and vice chair nomination to after the work session program, so that way, or the work program, so we're handling that at the end of the meeting.
I move to, to adjust the agenda so that item one, Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair nomination is moved to after item five, 2025 PC Work Program.
Second.
Perfect. Do we need to vote on?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Please do a roll call or just a, an all vote? How do we do that?
You can probably do an oral vote, I think.
Oral vote, please. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yet, alright.
So the motion passes?
Motion passes zero.
Six, zero.
Thank you. Onto item two, consideration of December 11th, 2024, and January 8th Planning Commission meetings. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. That takes us to the work session. Next on the agenda is a work session for Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness Basalt Creek Project. This work session is a chance for the Planning Commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. At this time, I call for city staff to present information they have prepared at the work session. Will city staff please present?
Good evening, Chair Carr and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Looksoy, Associate Planner, and Dan Polly is also joining tonight.
Yes. Look forward to this discussion. Talking nothing about amphibians.
So, we're here tonight to seek Planning Commission's input on technical analyses and land use types related to refinement of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan for the Wilsonville Industrial Land Readiness Project, otherwise known as Willer. Additional work sessions with the Planning Commission and City Council on the project are anticipated throughout 2025 with adoption hearings near the end of the year. There are several tasks involved in the Basalt Creek portion of the Willer project as listed on this slide. To date, the Planning Commission has provided input on the work products led by Eco Northwest, and tonight, we are presenting the Transportation System Plan Reevaluation and Local Street Concept Map, prepared by DKS, the Natural Resources Inventory, prepared by Pacific Habitat Services, the Draft Infrastructure Summary, prepared by city engineering staff, and a synopsis of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan Land Use Types, prepared by planning staff. We'd like to note that one objective of the analyses in the Basalt Creek part of the Willer project is to determine, based on the updated information in the key reports and studies, whether the land use types envisioned in the concept plan continue to be the best option, or whether refinements are needed to realize the vision of Basalt Creek. We are particularly looking for feedback from Planning Commission tonight addressing this question during the discussion. All the reports and studies will inform the Basalt Creek tasks, which include drafting a master plan for Basalt Creek as well as subsequent implementing development code. The Basalt Creek Concept Plan established a vision for urbanization of the planning area consistent with the guiding principles adopted by Wilsonville and Tuolatin during the joint planning process. Components of the vision, as they apply specifically to Wilsonville, include meeting regional responsibility for jobs, capitalizing on the assets of the planning area, maintaining the city's unique identity, and exploring creative approaches to land use. Specific to land use, there was a desire to identify creative approaches to integration of employment in Wilsonville with adjacent housing, ensuring appropriate transitions between land uses, and incorporating high-quality design and amenities for employment. Further, the Basalt Creek Concept Plan identified preferred land use across the area, recommended high-level designs for transportation and infrastructure systems to support future development consistent with local, regional, and state goals, and set specific action items and The Basalt Creek Concept Plan Transportation Preferred Alternative for 2035, shown on the left on this slide, included a roadway network of arterials, collectors, and local streets within the Basalt Creek planning area. As part of the Willer work, DKS prepared an updated local street concept map, as shown on the right of this slide, with input from city staff. The revised concept map identifies likely connection points and alignments for future local streets in the Basalt Creek planning area to inform the updated infrastructure analysis and funding plan. Arterials such as Graham's Ferry Road, Day Road, Boons Ferry Road, and Basalt Creek Parkway and its future extension already exist in the planning area and are assumed to be fixed. Key intersections, shown as black circles, also are assumed to be fixed as they are based on intersection spacing standards. Hence, arterial alignments are identical and key intersection locations are similar to the concept plan preferred alternative. Some of the local street alignments, shown as red dashed lines in the local street concept map, have been modified based on staff discussion and information contained in the updated Buildable Lands Inventory, the Site Suitability Analysis, and other reports for the Willer project. The local streets are conceptual, and actual alignments will either be new public streets or private streets in public easements, which will be determined as development occurs. The Transportation System Reevaluation was prepared to review the city's current list of TSP projects related to the Basalt Creek planning area, and this is to ensure that the land use assumptions and identified transportation projects are still applicable, as well as to identify any new transportation improvement projects that might be needed to further support the current development plan for the concept plan area. One of the key findings included that the list of Basalt Creek projects that were added or updated in the city's TSP as part of the 2019 amendments after adoption of the concept plan are still applicable. There, there are no new projects that have been added, and no changes to the list were made with TSP amendments in 2020 for the Town Center Plan or in 2023 for the Prague Pond East and South Plan. Although 10 years or 48% of the 21-year concept planning period, which spans from 2014 to 2035, has elapsed, only 20% of the anticipated development and transportation infrastructure, primarily in residential development in Tuolatin, have been approved and are constructed. Thus, the report concluded that a reevaluation of future 2035 traffic volumes and vehicle operations was not a compelling effort at this time. The reevaluation further concluded that no additional transportation projects beyond what is in the current TSP are needed to support the planned growth in Basalt Creek.
I would say with that, we are still evaluating the access for West Railroad. That works about halfway done, and we should be seeing that here in the next month or so.
It's noted that in the transportation reevaluation, that the traffic analysis reported in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan occurred before the impacts of COVID-19, and that during 2020 and 2021, there was a notable dip in traffic citywide. As of 2023, traffic volumes on adjacent roadways had not quite reached the pre-COVID levels, but appeared to be increasing through 2024. The dip in traffic indicates that there's a potential for more vehicle capacity within the planning area beyond the identified transportation projects documented in the concept plan and the TSP. Since adoption of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, updates to the city's utility master plans have included planning for Basalt Creek. To further inform the Basalt Creek portion of the Willer project, city engineering staff reviewed the revised alignments shown in the updated local street concept map and prepared to draft infrastructure summary addressing water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. In general, the water, sewer, and stormwater main lines are anticipated to follow the arterial street layout in the updated local street concept map, connecting with existing lines where available, similar to what was previously envisioned in the concept plan. The summary includes rough cost estimates for needed improvements, which will be further refined in the infrastructure funding plan later this year. As part of the Willer project, a natural resources inventory was prepared for the Basalt Creek planning area by Pacific Habitat Services in compliance with statewide planning Goal V. This work inventoried wetlands, streams, riparian areas, upland tree groves, and wildlife habitat in the planning area. As shown on this slide, the updated natural resources inventory identified two significant wetland areas. These include BC1 in the Basalt Creek Canyon, shown in the map on the right, and BC2-
Are turquoise colors the wetlands?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And BC2 in West Railroad on the left. These wetland areas are surrounded by two significant riparian areas, including BCR1P, R1, RIP1 in the Basalt Creek Canyon, which is the green.
The dark green, yeah.
Yeah, the dark green. And BCRIP2 in West Railroad. Two major stream systems exist within the two significant wetland areas, including Tapman Creek in Basalt Creek Canyon, and Coffee Lake Creek and a tributary to Coffee Lake Creek in West Railroad. There are also several upland tree groves with BCG7 in the Basalt Creek Canyon, meeting criteria for wildlife habitat, and that's just kind of that little island in the middle of the turquoise in BC1. These significant resources are recommended to be designated as Significant Resource Overlay Zone to meet Goal V objectives. The concept plan includes three industrial land use types, as shown on the map on this slide. These include high-tech employment, shown in purple, light industrial, which is in a lighter purple, and craft industrial in turquoise. West Railroad is shown in gray because a land use type was not assigned to it during the concept planning process. Each land use type included an assumed mix of employment development types and uses, such as office, industrial, warehousing, and retail, as shown in the table on this slide. The highest number of jobs was assumed to be in the high-tech employment type, and the lowest in craft industrial, with assumed, which assumed a modest opportunity for both residential and business in live-work units. All the land use types support adjacent and nearby industrial areas, such as the Coffee Creek industrial area, and provide flexibility to meet a range of market demands. The Basalt Creek Concept Plan considered the land use types and uses to be a good candidate for the city's Industrial Design Overlay District, Form Base Code, which was adopted in 2018 for Coffee Creek, should the city decide to extend it north into all or a portion of the planning area. Because the West Railroad area was considered heavily constrained by natural resources and lack of access to transportation and utility infrastructure, assigning a land use type to the area was deferred until further planning could occur. High-tech employment as modeled in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan is envisioned to include high-tech single users accompanied by manufacturing and some warehouse space. Employment was assumed to be roughly half-office and half-industrial. Initially modeled as one- and two-story buildings, the city desired to provide opportunities for four- and five-story office buildings as well, particularly near I-5 and along southwest Boons Ferry Road. Some examples that were modeled in the concept plan for high-tech employment include Eaton on southwest Kinsman Road, DW Fritz on southwest Beckman Road, and Rockwell on southwest Parkway Avenue. These developments or similar examples are illustrated on this slide. One of the reasons why the high-tech employment type was extended along the entirety of southwest Day Road was the desire for design consistency with properties in the Coffee Creek Master Plan area on the south side of the road. This area is highlighted by a red dashed line on the map on the slide. All of Coffee Creek, including these properties, is zoned with the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District. Development in Coffee Creek is envisioned as a modern industrial district featuring cohesive and high-quality site, landscape, and building design that's well-integrated with adjacent streetscapes and other public spaces, supports a multimodal transportation network, and creates a pleasant and functional district for employees and visitors. Thus, assigning the high-tech employment to properties on the north side of Day Road would result in more consistency of use and development form along both sides of the road, particularly if the overlay district is extended to include Basalt Creek. As previously mentioned, one objective of the analyses in the Basalt Creek part of the Willer project was to determine, based on the updated information, whether the land use types envisioned in the concept plan continue to be the best option, or whether refinements are needed. The Site Suitability Analysis for Basalt Creek includes the southwest Green Hill Site, which spans 57 acres in the high-tech employment land use type, east of southwest Boons Ferry Road, as shown in the illustration on the left. The area also is outlined in yellow in the aerial photo in the middle of the slide. The Green Hill Site's high proportion of undeveloped land, consolidated land ownership, and proximity to existing infrastructure make it one of the most attractive locations in Basalt Creek for industrial development. The site could be physically suitable for high-tech supply chain, clean tech industries, advanced manufacturing, food processing, warehousing and distribution, and industrial parks or R&amp;D campuses. Its proximity to transportation networks and regional workforce access further enhances the competitiveness of the site. This validates the uses originally envisioned in the concept plan for the high-tech employment type, with the caveat that it's possible that the amount of office space could occupy a smaller share than originally envisioned, just based on the market studies that were done. It should be noted that there are some challenges posed to urban industrial development by the presence of contractors' establishments throughout Basalt Creek. As shown in the map on the left of this slide, indicated, and indicated in dark blue, as well as the area outlined in yellow in the aerial photograph, several of the properties on the north side of Day Road in the high-tech employment type are being used as contractors' establishments. Properties occupied by this use are unlikely to transition to higher intensity use without city intervention, and if the city seeks to promote urban industrial development in these areas, a more proactive approach will be necessary, including targeted incentives and policies to encourage redevelopment. The light industrial type, as modeled in the concept plan, is expected to include primarily manufacturing and warehouse uses in single or multi-tenant buildings with some office and commercial activities. Employment was assumed to be roughly 69% industrial, with the remainder split between warehousing and office. Some examples that were modeled in the concept plan for light industrial include Synergy Medical Systems on Beauberg, Houston's on southwest Freeman Drive, McKesson on southwest Commerce Circle, as well as the Canyon Creek Business Center and Wilsonville Corporate Center. These developments or similar examples are illustrated here. The uses and form of development as envisioned in the concept plan in the light industrial type is similar to development in existing industrial areas of the city, such as on 95th, Commerce Circle, and southwest Beauberg Road. Although the Site Suitability Analysis for the Willer project does not include a study site with the light industrial type, it notes that an approach supporting a wide range of industrial and office uses consistent with the concept plan and the economic inventory is desirable. This approach allows the market to determine the most appropriate locations for various business types, while still prioritizing industries aligned with the city's employment and wage goals. This validates the uses originally envisioned in the concept plan for the light industrial type. As can be seen on the map in the middle of the slide, the area outlined in yellow in the aerial at the bottom, on the bottom left, there are contractors' establishments occupying several of the properties in the light industrial type, particularly on the north side of Clay Street. And it should be noted that, as in other areas, there are challenges related to that for urban industrial development. The craft industrial type, as envisioned in Basalt Creek, anticipates a mix of small-tenant spaces for creative industries and smaller-scale commercial uses, with some limited residential use in the form of live-work or work-live units and studio spaces. In the aerial photo on the left, the craft industrial area is outlined in yellow, and the potentially developable portion is shaded in light yellow. This land use type responds to existing single-family residential development in the area, topography and natural constraints of the Basalt Creek Canyon, and the area's location directly south across the future extension of the Basalt Creek Parkway from residential land and a planned commercial, neighborhood commercial node in Tuolatin. In the long term, the craft industrial area is anticipated to have two-to-three-story buildings with small-tenant spaces for light industrial manufacturing and office uses on the ground floor, as well as some retail and living space above. Industries could include incubator, craft, and artisan innovation and maker spaces. Some examples that were modeled in the concept plan for craft industrial include the Hood River waterfront, as well as southeast Portland. Hood River in particular was considered a good example of development that could occur in this land use type, with two- and three-story buildings being used by craft industries with live-work spaces adjacent, and with workspaces, and then also adjacent to a park, natural areas, and other industrial uses. Developments in these areas are illustrated on the slide. The mix of uses in the craft industrial district would blend well with adjacent neighborhoods. Creative industries could include incubator spaces, craft beer, wine, and food spaces, a tasting room, brewery, perhaps a seamstress, photographer, or photography studio, or tech innovations, with some office, retail, and services. This could enable young entrepreneurs to live and work close to industries with which they would want to partner, and could provide supporting services and retail for employees. The Site Suitability Analysis includes a craft industrial site, as shown in the illustration on the left, with only 14 acres of unconstrained land available for development, and its proximity to residential areas to the north in Tuolatin, as well as existing residential development on parcels in this land use type, its suitability for high-intensity industrial use is very limited. The analysis concludes that the area aligns with the concept plan's vision for small-scale or micro-industrial uses, such as live-work spaces and maker spaces. With site aggregation, the southern portion of the craft industrial area could accommodate small-scale industrial or office users on up to about five acres. These uses could resemble industrial condo developments like the Commerce Circle Business Park or Riverwood Business Center, which integrate office and small-scale production spaces, or buildings similar to those along the Hood River waterfront. While the northern portion also could redevelop, this area is likely less appealing due to its irregular shape and nearby high-value residences. The president, the presence of existing residents is likely to delay redevelopment timelines compared to other parts of the planning area, although it's possible that transitional uses, such as home-based businesses or cottage industries, in accessory structures could occur in the interim. With regard to contractors' establishments, none of the properties in the craft industrial type are occupied by this use, and as the properties are heavily constrained by natural resources and small parcel size, it's not expected that this area will experience similar West Railroad is shaded gray on the Basalt Creek Concept Plan on the right and colored purple on the map on the left. It's divided from the rest of the planning area by the Portland and Western Railroad, indicated by a red dashed line on the map, and the Coffee Creek Correctional Facility. When the concept plan was adopted, this area was heavily constrained by natural resources, fragmented property ownership, and lack of access to adequate water, sewer, and transportation infrastructure. Although the area was considered to have potential for resource conservation and future public access to nature due to those constraints, a future land use scenario was not created. The Site Suitability Analysis prepared for Basalt Creek as part of the Willer project includes West Railroad as an opportunity site, as shown in the illustration on the slide. The, the opportunity site spans 165 acres in large parcels with access to regional transportation networks, which could make it suitable for uses such as general manufacturing, food processing and warehousing, or distribution. Proximity to Coffee Creek's industrial area further enhances its appeal to businesses that could provide support services to neighboring industries. However, significant inf- However, significant infrastructure upgrades are required in West Railroad, and access is limited by only one established point of vehicular ingress and egress, which is from Southwest Graham's Ferry Road that borders the area on the south. The low railroad undercrossing on Southwest Graham's Ferry Road further constrains access, as it does not currently allow passage by standard-height semi-trailers. In addition, the area's proximity to a rail line and the presence of a mining operation in the northern part of the area could make it less attractive to advanced manufacturing or other industries sensitive to vibration. A further consideration in West Railroad is the presence of contractors establishments, which have proliferated in recent years. This is illustrated in the aerial photo on the left of the slide, and by the dark blue shading on the map in the center. The presence of these creates additional challenges, as we've talked about before, and, you know, if the city seeks to promote urban industrial development in this area, we'll have to take a proactive approach to that, including targeted incentives and policies to encourage redevelopment. And I think with that, that concludes my presentation. We're seeking feedback from Planning Commission responding to the questions on this slide, particularly related to the land use types and their appropriateness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members of the Commission, do you have any questions or comments for staff? Yes?
So, the southwest is a green hill, is just north of there is Tuolleton, right? And then, that's all residential? Okay. So, I think, yeah, that's my clarifying question, and then I'll have thoughts later.
So, I have some questions regarding the traffic, the transportation, the traffic flow and all that, and the road improvement in the area. With Basalt Creek, you had a map there that showed what the intent was, or where you were headed with it?
Go way back up to the beginning here. There.
There you go, there you go. So, what's the timing of the road improvements and the road additions in that area? My concern is, is that, you know, currently, it's a pretty congested area. You have another, per the notes here, there's another 500 or 600 houses going into Tuolleton, and, you know, and then also, all the industrial building in Sherwood, Tuolleton, and Tigard, and all that traffic flow is south, and this is the only access to the freeway on the south boundary. So, you know, the question here is, is this route, does it have the capacity to handle that amount of traffic, and what's the timing for the improvements, you know, throughout the process?
Sure. I don't have all the answers, our engineers are not here. I can say that our engineers have been involved with the county on planning the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension. Certainly, we can get that information to you outside this meeting, but we did not come prepared with those details in terms of the timing of that, as that wasn't the focus. In terms of, the other comments I would say is certainly, well, first of all, in terms of how Tuolleton traffic impacts what we're doing here, that was part of the deal, there was traffic, the traffic analysis done with the concept plan, and, you know, Tuolleton gets their share, we get our share, and we are actively tracking development in Tuolleton, and just coordinating with them to ensure that that balance is maintained. So, I will comment that. Otherwise, as you may recall from your DRB days, still, it's, we have our concurrency requirements in the Development Code that would still apply here, the occupancy wouldn't be allowed until something's funded and on its way within 24 months, if it pushes any streets over capacity.
The second thing is, is there, over the long term, as this area develops out, is there any consideration to put in an additional metro rail station in the area?
Not to my knowledge, at this point. I, you know, certainly, there's discussion around transit, and particularly discussion around, because this is Tri-Met territory, and kind of correcting that, so SMART can serve this area, but certainly, similar to other industrial areas in the city, the SMART's focus would be to get, to have, to coordinate with the, with the businesses, to get employees to and from the west station as efficiently as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you, you ready?
I just got connected to the internet, so I'm catching back up on the questions.
Okay. Are you ready for some questions?
Sure.
All right.
Actually, if you can go back to the map real quick.
Which one? You want to go back to the transportation one?
The transportation one, yeah. So, okay, so, at Basalt Creek Parkway and Day Road, there are dotted lines going east, stopping at I-5. What is the intent of those?
So, there's, the long-term plan calls for flyovers over I-5, but those are longer out than really the planning horizon for this plan.
Okay. So, those are both flyovers? There's no intended connections to I-5?
Correct, no new interchanges, but essentially, it does, for example, the Day Road brings traffic kind of around to the other side of the interchange to kind of spread that load over that interchange better.
Okay. All right. And then, natural resources section, so, B.C. 1 and the riparian 1, how does that area correlate to what we thought it was going to be? If I remember correctly, there was a question on how much space that was going to take up. Do we understand whether that has grown, or shrunk, or stayed the same as to what we thought it was going to be?
I think for, I mean, roughly speaking, and we can follow up in more detail as necessary, Commissioner Heverland, but Tapman Creek, I don't think there were huge surprises there in the Basalt Creek Canyon. I think the areas, with some of the development changes, in, and just the level that it was looked at, I would say, prior that, the extent of, of it in West Railroad, there's essentially more developable land in West Railroad than originally thought.
Okay.
Would that be fair to say?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, last question, on the land use districts, do we, do we have any idea of what the current mix is in the city of the land use types that we're proposing here?
That's a good question. I don't, that'll be something that we'll...
So, I think the follow-up question is, let's get that information, to the best of our ability.
And then, the follow-up to that would be, do we understand the vacancy rates for those product types in the city? I'm trying to understand whether or not there is unmet demand, or whether we are proposing a product type that has no current demand. And while that isn't necessarily our only rationale for making a choice, it's good information to have as we try to align out what we're going to set.
I think some of that information's in it, it's just not organized in that manner, so.
Right.
So, we will work with ECO to kind of give it...
Thank you.
Because, I mean, we did look at market demand, but it's part of the ECO Northwest work.
Okay.
Commissioner Semenova?
Perfect question. Thank you for asking that. My other question was in regards to the energy infrastructure required, to the energy demand of this type of land use and buildings and businesses. Has there been an evaluation done on that, and whether the existing infrastructure will support it, or if there's going to need to be a build of new infrastructure?
There has been ongoing conversations with PGE. They are aware of it, they're, I mean, their additional infrastructure's under, I mean, roughly speaking, what, generally, I mean, they don't, they feel confident in their ability to build out stuff, as long as they have enough lead weight, that they'd be able to serve this area. There's not, like, identified, we haven't heard from them, any identified, like, downstream bottlenecks that would prevent them from building the infrastructure needed to serve heavy-power users here.
And the cost is feasible, or for the benefit of...
Well, I mean, we don't have all those details, because, I mean, PGE manages that. It's not a municipal service, but the question's been asked, and no, no red flags have been raised by, by PGE, so. And, I mean, they're building out the new substation, there is a lot of power infrastructure nearby that they can build upon. So, they haven't, in terms of cost, or, or like, or anything, they haven't identified any red flags that would prevent the build-out of that infrastructure.
And typically, who carries the burden of those costs, if there is upgrades or additional infrastructure required?
We do not have the answer of that. I mean, that's really, that's worked out between the utility, and the ratepayers, and the developer.
Okay.
But again, no red flags have been raised. I'm not sure that we can get to the bottom of that or not. We can look into it a bit more, see what we can answer.
There was some analysis of that done with the ECO work, as far as just getting information and looking at the different types of uses that could occur in, in these areas, and whether availability of power would be a limiting factor, and it didn't appear that it would be, but we certainly can follow up with you about it.
Okay. Thank you.
In the TSP, it was mentioned that there was enhanced bicycle pedestrian crossings and connections to trails. I'm assuming those will all be handled within the context of the road projects that would, infrastructure projects that would occur? We just build that in as, instead of doing those as separate projects, they'd be done at the same time that we do the road projects?
Yeah, there is, there is an off-street trail along the canyon that...
Yeah, so, there's one that would come down on the west side of the canyon, down through here, that would, would connect, so, there's going to be bike lanes and on the Parkway, when it gets extended across, and there will be a landing that comes down off the Parkway to the south side, and that will cross under the Parkway and connect to Trail, the Trail in Tuolleton, as well as go farther south, you know, I mean, connect into a trail within the city, that would then connect to Day Road and, and other bicycle infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure. There's also the Tonkin Trail that's proposed along the, to go up along the west side of West Railroad. So, the east side of the Coffee Creek wetland, but along the west side of the road, so kind of where my, where I'm putting the cursor, sort of up and down here in West Railroad, is where it would go through.
Okay. And the, and the Tuolleton portion that's Basalt Creek, that's all going to be resident, north of Basalt Creek Parkway, that's residential?
Not all of it. There is...
The gray, the gray shaded part across from the craft industrial, that's residential?
That's probably going to be a combination of residential and, yeah, and recreation. They have, they do, Tuolleton had recently acquired a couple of parcels for a park in that area as well. And then, the purple, the darker-blue-ish, that's their manufacturing.
That's, okay, that's their industrial. And I'm assuming they withdraw far substation then?
Yeah, it's in their new zone, which is business, business employment, I think, is what they called it? Basalt Creek employment.
Okay. Let's see. I noticed in the infrastructure summary, we don't have much, we don't have costs on everything. Is that just because it's far off into the future, or we just haven't done that analysis?
We, we have costs, they've escalated it, and we'll be doing kind of a cash flow analysis here in the coming months.
Okay, because we don't have, like, adjusted costs on the Day Road improvements, 1 and 2, Stormwater Master Plan? Is that just because it was just a perute?
Yeah, it's in process. We just wanted to share the information that we do have at this point.
All right.
But, by time of adoption, we, we plan on having a cash flow analysis with best eye. And certainly, infrastructure costs, as we've learned, are a hard thing to, future infrastructure costs are a hard thing to pin down, but...
Got to start somewhere.
Got to start somewhere.
And then, West Railroad area, so we haven't obviously done the analysis of the land use in there, is, are we anticipating a time when we would do that analysis, or because there's so many constraints, we're not worried about it right now?
No, I, I would say we are worried, I mean, we have the information about the market study, and, and they came out of the ECO Northwest work, and then we will have a much better understanding here the next month or so, about what, what, in reality, we know it's a big number, but how big of a big number to provide industrial traffic access and other infrastructure, we'll, we will know, and whether, how that plays into feasibility. But from a pure, like, market demand, and, I mean, we have some ideas, and so, we'll want to, through this project, really identify a conference of plan designation for that, for potential future development.
Because I think that ties into what Commissioner Heverland was saying, is, okay, what's our, what's our current inventory for these different land uses, and are we going to overburden one land use that doesn't have the demand, right? So, let's just speculate that the West Railroad area turns out that it's best for craft industrial, because of the nature of the current infrastructure. Do we have enough demand for craft industrial to cover that 162 acres?
All right. So, I mean, it's a combination of flexibility, certainly for certain corridors, such as Day Road and I-5 frontage, there's some design considerations that have historically been discussed, but, and also want to make sure that there's employment, and in, and in addition to kind of inventorying what the, what the market demand is for current uses, what are emerging uses, and that's, right? How much is demand, for example, for data centers, and...
Because I think these different land uses have different infrastructure requirements, right? The larger the buildings, the more emphasis will have to be on, on the infrastructure. It's craft industrial, it's probably not as, the roads don't have to be as big.
Yeah, and for example, sewer, I mean, we don't know, we, we tried to make some assumptions through, like, the master planning, in terms of, like, what percentage maybe, you know, manufacturers use a lot of water, but we do know kind of employee count in terms of the traditional non-manufacturing fixtures, you know, more, more employee count, more, more fixtures that need sewer service.
All right. Commissioner Willard?
So, I have a slightly different view on the West Railroad area. Considering all the riparian areas and the, what is it, the B.C. 2 map overlay, it seems to me, and I assume as this work continues, it's going to be very obvious that this is not industrial-ready for any industry. It seems like a waste of a beautiful area, too, that could be a park along a wetland that's buffered by the train tracks. It just seems like, if the concept plan was flawed, potentially, and flagging this one as industrial, and that we should look at it for other uses that could enrich the community.
I mean, there's some regional planning that's gone into that.
Yeah, you know, it was brought in for industrial. It was added to the urban growth boundary for industrial, but there was recognition at that time too with the concept plan that there were a lot of natural resources out there. Metro does own a lot of property that's immediately adjacent to West Railroad for conservation purposes, development as natural, you know, protection as natural areas. I think the, the change, the biggest thing that has occurred out there is just that there were a lot more natural resources in the area when the concept plan was done. And now a lot of the area has been developed for storage and lay down yards and, and which is, has influenced to some extent our, our attitude about it and our, our perspective on it. It is severely constrained by infrastructure. And, you know, depending on what comes out of the, the analysis of the Graham's Ferry access could vary, you know, could, that could have a huge impact on what we think is viable out in that area going forward.
Certainly.
Because if you can't, you can't do warehousing and distribution if you can't get semi trucks in there.
Or you can't build a data center if you can't get concrete trucks there.
Yes, right.
Even if data centers are low operationally heavy from that roadway, construction heavy, they are not.
Yeah. And there is no possibility, we don't think, of having another at-grade crossing of the railroad tracks. So like, for instance, if you were going to go across at, I guess it's, well, either at Clay or at Cahalin, it's not likely to happen. So what does that mean? You know, if the, if the changing Graham's Ferry so that you are able to get trucks through there is just not a possibility, then we really have to rethink what is going to happen down there.
Yeah, I was just pulling something up here.
I mean, it could be things that use smaller delivery trucks, you know, smaller delivery vans, other types of uses that I don't know if it would be appropriate for things like headquarters or something that are, it's just, it's passenger vehicles and maybe smaller delivery vans.
I guess that's why, that's why I'm leaning towards, the market is showing us what its value is, which is light contractor laydowns that are, you know, somewhat disorganized, but they don't need a lot of heavy equipment access. And if we, if we're dissatisfied with that use, then we should look at using it for something like enriching the community. Maybe it's just abandoning the industrial concept because it's just not feasible.
And there are some, and I think we, to directly answer your question in terms of, you know, what kind of, what, what regulations are there out there now that kind of pointed towards industrial, right? When it was added to the urban growth boundary. So it is shown as employment land in the 2040 growth concept for Metro, for Metro. And there are some different uses that are allowed onto that. I think if we, we can follow up on kind of as necessary and depending on what direction we're going with preferred uses, what would be allowed under that designation, regional designation? Generally, as I understand it, don't want to get too far, but like residential maybe, but parks may not, for example. And that's just something we, we can follow up on. I'll make a note to do that. We haven't explored like to what extent non-employment uses could be there, but we can, we can explore that more just so we'll make sure that all options are on the table and we're thinking through this, especially as we have a greater understanding. We know that there is demand, that this is in it, surrounded by industrial areas. I mean, it has access to rail and other things, but it's really that road access and getting the utilities there that's the biggest question.
I have a similar sentiment around the craft industrial area, the, the B C one area that is so heavily constrained there too. And it seems a little bit counterintuitive to be disrupting housing or, you know, potentially zoning where there's housing now and we're in a housing crisis, we need more housing and, and zoning it for something that's more like craft industrial, which has a uncertain, you know, future about whether or not people are actually going to want models like that, that are, that are the live work models. When I've seen the live work models around the metro area, they just, they're kind of meh, they just don't really materialize the way we would like them to, but.
Yeah, and, and we show the pictures of those and that may be a long-term vision, but also I, I reemphasize what Cindy said about this is an opportunity that someone could build a shop in back and have like a signed shop and live in the existing home.
Yeah, but people that do that kind of employment, they can't afford that property. That's never going to happen. So, so that's, that's the, it's, it's not, it's just not likely.
Yeah.
So my final.
So yeah, and in the end, if those never sell from residential, I think it's about giving the property owners options. And in an area that's transitioning, that is long-term kind of on a buffer, buffer area transition from industrial to residential. And so, you know, some of those may be residential, but some of those may choose as that industrial builds out that it's like, I, this is feeling industrial now, I'm ready to, you know, move on. Or when, when, you know, future heirs or something decide that they want to dispose of a property, they may, you know, industrial developers may end up outbidding, may have a reason to outbid a residential buyer. So I think it's really about, that craft industrial is really about flexibility in an area that really has some uniqueness to it in terms of where it's located and the nature of the property.
Thank you for that. My last comment is around, since this was done in cooperation with Tuolleton back in 2018, I'd like to see more just coordination to understand where are they in their planning journey and how is it shaping up for them? And have they done similarly transportation impacts and environmental impacts? And, and how are they discovering any surprises? And just make sure there's a concurrency there between the two communities.
Yeah, I, I'll just say that that is happening at the staff level.
Okay.
And where's staying connected?
Well, then maybe just adding to the report that that's ongoing and there have been no surprises or there have been, things are going according to plan or, or just something to let us know that there's that kind of confidence.
Yeah, and particularly, you know, there's been discussions around park coordination. They have a new parks director that we know well and so that coordination will be ongoing.
Who's the new parks director? Did I miss that?
Dustin.
Dustin Scholl, who was our parks supervisor for many years.
I missed that. So good. Yeah, so you've got a network there. Good. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
I think you had a slide at the end that had questions. Did we address all of those?
I think we, kind of more discussion. I think one, one of the key guidances that we're looking for, as we're comfortable, is how, we've got into a bit, but more importantly, you know, in terms of the extent of looking at what we know in terms of the information about the market study that we've reviewed and about these layers and about constraints, about contractors, establishment, just everything we've discussed, let's get a read of where we are in terms of, are we comfortable with where, what's designated for these areas? Granted, we know that, for example, we may need to tweak the office percentages based on current market trends in some areas. Or are there any areas that really were like, yeah, we really should switch that to light industrial or high-tech employment or something else? I think we've gotten some of that discussion in terms of West Railroad, really. And I'd be interested in the rest of the commission's thoughts on like, you know, how open or kind of direction of what to explore on West Railroad, knowing that there are maybe some constraints of how far we can go there. And I think, just pa, just parking on West Railroad for, for a moment, I do think that as that new information comes out here from the current infrastructure study, that we'll come back to, to the commission and have kind of a more detailed discussion about what that means for West Railroad and maybe, because I think that will have us to kind of come back to that. But, so if there's any other thoughts on West Railroad, we're happy to take those, but know that there's going to be further discussion there that's kind of unique. But then for the rest of the area, how are we feeling generally about what the concept plan designated that land? And is there any changes that we should contemplate and why? Does that make sense?
Commissioner Hendricks, do you have additional comments? No?
Yeah, I think for the West Railroad, definitely waiting for that analysis on the road access and then also those requirements or just that history, understanding of like bringing it into the U G B and just getting more information there will be helpful. For the craft industrial, appreciated Commissioner Willard's comment, comments. Yeah, my first thought, I was curious about that as an option because I was thinking about that, like, we work within city boundaries and borders, but people don't live that way, right? So if there are residential areas, then maybe that is an interesting opportunity for people who live close by to be able to walk to some of these, but depending on what they are, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of the opportunities. And so it is helpful, like in future, even this graphic that's on the PowerPoint, the question was asked of like, what are these, the uses in Tuolleton? It's just good to have that context of like what is going on there. But now, now we know, so that's good. So I'm curious about it, but definitely open to more discussion on it if we're not feeling like that's the best approach. And then, yeah, my, my first reaction when seeing like the light industrial examples was like, we see a lot of this in Wilsonville. And then it was kind of curious about like the demand, but I do hear staff, you know, with, well, what are we planning for? Like, what do we anticipate seeing? But right now, in my mind, when my first reaction was like, don't we have enough of, do we have enough of that? And so anyways, I think overall, I appreciate this as a like first discussion, but definitely feel like we need a little bit more information to kind of come to conclusions or just make a more formal recommendation. So those are some of the first thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Herblin?
Hey. Okay, West Railroad area, you know, one of the things that I have jotted down here is, is, is the benefit worth the cost? And, and that's the, I think, the information that I don't have right now and, and that will help identify a potential land use type and, and whether that's industrial, whether that's a public benefit, whether that's residential. I, I think understanding what the constraints are, I mean, we know that it's a difficult place to build from an industrial perspective. The infrastructure is not there, the access isn't great. So what are those realistic options? Knowing that Metro had things in mind, a lot's changed from then to now as well from housing perspective. So maybe there's another option that, that could be considered. Craft industrial, I think, is, is some of that same challenge is, is what really makes sense there. It's such a small, such a small area. Is, is there a benefit of, of doing something there? Is there a better benefit of trying to do something different? It's something to consider. And I think beyond that, having some more information on, on the current mix, what the demand might be, will help me be able to, to give a better perspective on whether or not we have the right mix in the right places.
I would add on the, on the mix, just kind of generally as we continue this discussion or circle back. Just speaking, it's always interesting to talk about the market because Wilsonville would be a different place if historically we went just with what the market told us.
Absolutely.
And so to, so it's always a tough balance as we talked about, I said I wasn't going to talk about amphibian, but about frog pond, it's, it's about pushing a realistic change towards a policy goal while still being realistic with the market. So it's, it's that fine balance. I, and I'd be interested if, I mean, are we going to be all market-based or are we trying to work that fine balance, right? There may be some push to get the market to do some of those key design elements along like Day Road and kind of, Wilsonville's historically been very sensitive to kind of how we look from Interstate Five and, you know, what do we push there in terms of policy standpoint and uses to make sure that kind of gateway to our community on I-5 is what the community envisions. And so, interested in your input on, you know, that market versus what maybe are those specific policy goals or visions that we're looking at? Or do we need more information or want to revisit any of that from the concept plan or even from other historic planning documents and how that plays in here?
Yeah, I think from my perspective, it, the understanding the current state and the market demands is just a piece of the puzzle. It's not the only piece. It, it's not the intent of, okay, we need to match that so that we have the right demand. But if there's a significant imbalance somewhere and that drives a conversation around, well, maybe we do need to look at, at a change. If, if light industrial is 85% vacant, which is probably not, but if there's some significant level of vacancy in one, in one product type versus another, and we don't have a good line on, on a trend for the future of we see some huge growth in that area, then maybe it at least drives us to have some flexibility in that space instead of a, a hard requirement for, for one area versus another. So I think for me, it's just a, a piece of the puzzle that, that can help inform what might make sense. And in reality, the industrial side of things doesn't, in my mind, I guess from my experience in the city, it doesn't seem to be as strong of a focus as, as some of the residential expectations. You know, the focus is not, we, we shall have, you know, a significant increase in high-tech employment district. I think there's a desire for there to be more, but it's not as, I guess, as strong, if that makes sense, as, as what we see on the residential side from a.
Of getting that mix correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Other comments? Questions? All right. Hearing no further discussion, thank you. That concludes this work session. And that moves us to agenda item number four. Any city council action minutes, any discussion on that, questions? Nobody? No staff presentation on the work program. So now we come to the fun part.
So Chair Carr and members of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission will now elect a chair and vice chair subject to the following rules. We will begin with nominations for the position of chair of the Planning Commission. Any member of the commission can nominate someone for, for chair. You can nominate yourself. Nominations do not have to be seconded. If you are nominated but do not want the position, simply state that you decline the nomination. When the nominations stop, Chair Carr will call for any more nominations. And when there are none for, when no nominations are forthcoming, Chair Carr will declare the nominations closed. Once the nominations are closed, we will conduct a roll call vote. Each of you will state the name of your chosen nominee when you are called to vote. What, if one person receives a majority, Chair Carr will declare the result of the vote. If no one receives a majority of the vote, we will redo the vote until one person receives the majority. No nominee may be dropped unless that person voluntarily withdraws from consideration. Upon completion of the election of the chair, we will then elect the vice chair in the same manner by first nominating candidates, then closing nominations, voting until one person receives a majority of the votes, and then Chair Carr will declare the result. So with that, we can start with nominations for the position of chair.
So I have one, one question. Do I vote or just in a tiebreaker?
You vote.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
All right. So nominations for chair.
I nominate Commissioner Hendricks.
And I nominate Commissioner Willard. Any other nomination? Any other nominations? All right, so nominations are closed and now I call for a vote, a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Does anybody not want to?
Yeah, I guess, do either of you decline the nomination?
Yeah. Do you want to be chair? Because I will happily be vice chair if you're interested in being chair. But I'm not seeking to be chair. No. I will because I think it's important that we rotate, but it's not something I am craving to do, no. Have you been chair yet? Okay, you're up.
Okay.
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 Roll call vote.
So just to be clear, Commissioner Willard, are you, do you still want to be considered in the nominations?
Sure, yes, yes.
Okay. So the two nominees are Commissioner Willard and Commissioner Hendricks.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Andrew Carr.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yana Semenova.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Sam Skoll.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Jennifer Willard.
Commissioner Hendricks.
And Nicole Hendricks.
Well, I guess I'll vote for myself, so just to show that I, I care and I'm going to do this well, I promise.
And unanimously elect Commissioner, or now Chair, Hendricks. All right, we'll move on to co-chair nomination.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
I'd love to have a co-chair, actually.
Go ahead, yeah, vice chair. Anyone want to nominate someone?
I'll nominate Commissioner Willard.
Any other nominations? All right, nominations are closed. Roll call vote, please.
Yana Semenova.
Commissioner Willard.
Sam Skoll.
Commissioner Willard.
Andrew Carr.
Commissioner Willard.
Ron Heberlein.
Can I abstain? Okay, Commissioner Willard.
I love it.
Nicole Hendricks.
Commissioner Willard.
And Jennifer Willard.
Commissioner Willard.
That closes.
So, so the result is 6-0?
The result is, the vice chair is Commissioner Willard. Okay, now what do I do? It's, it's done?
Yeah, so I, I think all the business for the meeting is done, so you can adjourn the meeting.
So now, does someone want to...
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
And the meeting is adjourned at 7:13 PM.